For the last time, I want to call this meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Quorum of board members is present. This meeting's been duly called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. You'll join me in the pledge to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Before we get to our recognitions, we have a little bit of business to do. Would share with the board and everybody else that Leo Camden got tied up in Dallas and unable to join us this evening, but he sends his regrets. We're going to begin our meeting with the consent agendas. Any board member have any items they'd like to hold for discussion? Hearing none, let me identify those items. We have the minutes of the April 16th, 2018 regular meeting, the May 14th, 2018 special meeting, the un-audited financial report for the month ending April 30th, 2018, including the investment report. We have gifts, grants, and bequests that you can see on the screen on page 50 of the packet. We appreciate those who have donated to our student funds on their behalf. We have two expenditures over $50,000 requiring board action. We have the annual renewal of the Communities and Schools contract. This contract is for $193,676, which is 45 percent of the total cost of the Communities and Schools program. That is funded through the general fund budget and Title I federal grant. We have, secondly, the mentoring minds renewal. This is an amount of $95,631.36. This is funded through the instructional materials allotment funding. And then we have two supply equipment and service bids. The first one apparel and uniforms, accessories, and supplies supplemental, one RFP 1-803-743-185, to approve the vendor list. This contract will be effective June 1st, 2018, through April 30, 2019, with two automatic renewals, one year at a time. And, secondly, the technology equipment supplies, parts, and services, RFP 1-803-915-186, to approve the vendor list. This contract is effective June 1st, 2018, through May 31st, 2019, with three automatic renewals, one year at a time. We have the resolution of hazardous traffic conditions. This is, again, a renewal, however, with one change, do the new road and sidewalks available. We have to approve the competitive sealed proposal as a construction delivery method for the elementary school playground accessibility routes, accessible routes project, and authorize the superintendent to issue requests for proposals for the project, select a community evaluate and rank the proposals, and bring the recommendation rankings back to the board for approval. This is regarding the projects we discussed at the March meeting and asked the administration to bring us back this first step in that process of working on our elementary playgrounds. We have the contract with O'Connell Robertson Architects for architectural services for the elementary school playground accessible routes project, legal services retainer agreement between T.C.L. and T.C.L., LLP and Belton ISD, the right-of-way donation to the city of Belton for the Chisholm Trail hike and bike facility, Phase II, as discussed at our February 26 regular meeting. City manager Sam Listy and Mac Parker are with us today, but that's on consent agenda. So, thank you for coming back in February to explain all that. And John Messer, city attorney, is also here, who helped draft all that stuff for us. We have the conveyance of utilities easement to Encore Electric at the Charter Oak Elementary site. We have amendment number one to contract with O'Connell Robertson Architects for architectural services for Charter Oak Elementary, amendment number one to contract with O'Connell Robertson Architects for architectural services for Lake Belton High School, and amendment number one to contract with O'Connell Robertson Architects for architectural services for the Wall Street auditorium upgrades. So, that is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? I have a motion for Mr. Norwood's second. Mr. Taggart, sorry. All right, all in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passes unanimously. We'll go to public comments. Have been given one. I know we have a group of students with us. Come on up. Samantha Walter's going to be, I think, the spokesperson? No, I'm sorry, that's a different group. I am so sorry. Still, we're going to let you all come first. Sorry, Samantha, hang on just a second. Come on up. There's some of our theater thespian students. Wake me up.
Hi, I'm Shelby Curry. I'm the president of ITS Troop 3491 at Belton High School. I'm joined with my vice president Nathan LeBlanc, our sergeant-at-arms Ruthie Butler, and our new tech representative Autumn Kelly. And we would like to read a letter that we wrote in regards to the honor cords at graduation. Dear Belton School Board, it has come to our attention that graduating members of Belton High School chapter of the International Thespian Society Troop 3491 will not be able to wear the hard-earned regalia that signifies outstanding achievement and an honor society. It is our understanding that in the past, students have worn cords at graduation from an organization that was at no time recognized by Belton High School. In fact, the National Society of High School Scholars is an organization that does not award cords, but students can purchase them online after they pay almost $100 to join the organization. Troop 3491 of the International Thespian Society is a chartered and recognized honor society at Belton High School. As members of this prestigious organization, we are asking permission to proudly wear our cords that we have worked so diligently to earn. In order to become a member of the International Thespian Society, one must contribute 100 documented hours in working in theater arts and technical theater, must be actively involved in fine arts department, and participate in community service. The troop is involved in several community outreach projects every year. For example, our troop spearheaded the Trick or Treat So Kids Can Eat initiative at Belton High School. Our troop also had the opportunity to compete in the Texas Thespian State Festival, a conference of over 8,000 thespians from around the state. While there, three of our students qualified for national competition, one of them being here, and one of our students was elected to serve as a state thespian officer. Within our troop, we have several students that have dedicated over 2,000 hours to theater arts and community service. Currently, the only group allowed to wear cords at Belton High School graduation is the National Honor Society. The requirements for membership in the National Honor Society chapter at Belton High School are as follows: awaited grade point average of 100, 10 community service hours, and good character. While those requirements do set a high standard, in comparison, the requirements of the International Thespian Society are significantly more demanding. We believe the hard work and dedication put into theater arts by these students should not go unnoticed at one of the defining events of their adult lives. We hope that the board will consider extending the equal opportunity of wearing cords to all members of recognized honor societies who are deserving of such an honor. We believe that thespians are not excluded from this select group. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, BHS class of 2018 members of the International Thespian Society Troop 3491.
Thank you. We, first of all, let me tell you how proud we are of you and our theater arts program exceptional work.
Thank you.
And you all have represented our community and our school district in Belton High School in a great way, and we're so proud of you. Good letter, really a well-written letter, and we appreciate you bringing that to us. It's not an item that's not on our agenda, so we can't address that. Any policy changes also require a month process to look at. So, what I want to do is encourage you to talk with your principals and go back with them and work with them about working towards the future and figuring out how best to resolve that. You've brought up a really good issue, and you've done it in a really appropriate way. So, again, you've carried yourself in a commendable way, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, now Samantha Walter. Would you like to come up?
Good evening. I just wanted to bring up a topic of bullying. With everything going on in the country, I think that it's important, we're all trying to figure out how we can stop all the issues with the school violence and that kind of thing. And what I've noticed, that, you know, we're not paying enough attention to the kids. I think there might be kids coming to staff at the schools, whoever it may be, a teacher or an aide or somebody, and letting them know that they have a concern that this person might not be treating them well. And I don't think that the child is getting the response that they should, you know, like it's just basically, oh, don't worry about it, the kids will be kids, it's not a big deal, try to ignore it, you know, that kind of thing. We're just pushing it off and not dealing with what the issues are. And I'm starting to think that those are some of the reasons some of these kids end up coming back and having the issues and causing these horrible events to happen because they ask for help at a younger age, and we just push them aside. We don't listen to what they say and try to help them work through the issues that, whether a child is actually being picked on or whatever the situation is, in their head, it's serious, and it's important for somebody to hear them and maybe help them in whatever way we can. And I just feel that they're not getting the help young enough from the school that they should be getting. And if we can try and give our children more support, you know, hear what they have to say, don't blow them off, let them know that we will do something about it, we'll look into it, we'll get you help talking to whoever you might need to, you know, and maybe pull aside the other kids that might be doing it, and help them realize that this is important. You can't be saying stuff to children, you know, think of how you would feel if people said this stuff to you. And I think maybe if we try to focus more on the children instead of pushing them aside, we can prevent, you know, things happening like Santa Fe that destroyed how many lives and that's, you know, that's the bottom goal. Everybody wants the children to be safe, and if they're crying out for help and we're not taking them seriously, then we're all to blame just as much as they are for resorting to what they do. So, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Clearly, it's an issue that's on everyone's mind right now, so thank you for bringing that. I want to encourage you to talk with Dr. Muller, our deputy superintendent, and be involved in the process of helping us work through these. These are difficult issues, and it's important for everybody to work together on this.
Yes, you're welcome.
So, thank you. Your passion for that, and you're willing to come speak to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Seeing no takers, we're going to recognize some of our students. I believe we have them staged outside, but as they're coming in, I want to recognize or start with some that maybe aren't on the agenda. The first one, I would just mention, we just completed, Mr. Schiller, help me, 1,700 years of service, is that correct? We recognize 1,700 years of service in Belton ISD at our spring updates at all our campuses and department. Really a wonderful event, certainly appreciate the work that Mr. Schiller and Mr. Iss did with Human Resources to coordinate that. Thank you for that. But in that process, I realized that I had a major mistake last year, and we didn't get Mike Cowan his 10-year pin, so he gets the very first 11-year service pin in the history of Belton ISD. So, join me in thanking Mike for his service at Belton ISD. You know, one of those bookkeeping things, you go, we missed that last year, snuck up and got by us, but we want to recognize and appreciate that. Another thing I wanted to say a special thank you, Elizabeth Cox and Robert Pryor and Sandy Slade, who happened to be just right up there. Planned, coordinated, and implemented an amazing event last week for Lake Belton High School groundbreaking, and we just want to say a thank you. You pulled together our community and got people there and to, it was a little hot, you know, a little hot, but you can't control the weather, but all those things you could control were just exceptionally well done.
Thank you.
Wonderful event to celebrate with our students and our community, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. It was truly a team effort. Thank you, Ms. Walters.
Yes, it was a great team effort, so thank you all. Okay, so let's recognize our Duke TIP state and national recognitions. And we have three different board members that are going to help pass out those. Let me give some guidelines, parents, in case you haven't been here before. We want this to be a formal presentation, but we want it to be informal for you to come take pictures. So, please get up and come up and take pictures of them. We're going to have them come to the front, we're going to give them a certificate, and then we'll pose them, we'll take pictures. Mr. Pryor will take pictures to post on our website and Google Photos and all that social media, but we want, we'll take as much time as you need to take pictures with them too, so.
We're lucky this is a pretty large group, so we're just going to let them come in.
We're excited. This is an extraordinary group of achievers.
Okay, great. So, Duke TIP is a nonprofit organization dedicated to serving academically gifted and talented students. The organization's talent search program identifies students based on standardized test scores and invites them to take either the ACT or SAT as seventh graders. This year, 19 Belton ISD students qualified for state recognition by scoring at or above the national average of recent high school graduates on at least one part of the ACT or the SAT. They are as follows: Corinne Finley, Katherine Heitzrader, Zakaya Longworth, Azid Ramendez, and Christopher Scott from Lake Belton Middle School. I'm going to take a group of the Lake Belton middle schoolers. Okay.
We might need a principal up here, too. Come on. Hey, hang on. We want to hold them all, or are we going to just do her?
We can hold them all? Yep, here we go.
Y'all stay there, we're going to bring the other schools up and get them all up here.
Next up is South Belton Middle School. Adam Ake, Miles Gaunt, Lauren Hale, Jackson Herzog, Duncan Lancaster, Caden Lerman, Clayton Oaks, Cole Peterson, and Dominic Thomas. Congratulations, South Belton Middle School. And then the last group we'll go ahead and start with is North, y'all are going to have to squish a little bit more, friends. The next group is North Belton Middle School. We have William Asontian Crabbe, Toby Berrien, Douglas Brito, Jason Janzik, and Ezekiel Payne. Again, these are the North Belton middle schoolers. These are students who qualified for state recognition.
All right, good job, Jeff. Good organizing. Block us, that's them.
You've been blocking ours? We're not worth looking at, but they are, so get them all in there. We got a few extra special ones in this group, too, right?
We're going to let these clear. And this year, in addition to the 19 students who qualified for state recognition, three students qualified for grand recognition, in which students must earn scores that are approximately equal to the 90th national percentile rank for college-bound seniors taking the tests. That includes about 4 percent of TIP students. Of the 48,000 students who took the exams through Duke TIP, only 2,611 were invited to the grand recognition ceremony. If you hear your name, please step forward. These students are Jackson Herzog, Caden Lerman, and Cole Peterson, all from South Belton Middle School.
How about that? So, this group represents our national merit scholar potential, there certainly are some others, but these are the ones that are definitely going to be on our list. We'll look forward to having you come back in a few years and recognize you as scholars in that regard. Really impressive results, we're really proud of you. Congratulations.
Some of these students scored, I don't know where Christina is, but their SAT scores were 1,300, 1,400, which is extremely hard to get even for our grad, some of our graduating seniors. These are outstanding scores, and we want them to be national merit finalists. So, you guys keep studying.
Awesome. How we doing on pictures?
Congratulations, we're good.
Good job, guys. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Great to see so many of our students excelling in this area. Next up, we're going to recognize our FFA state qualifiers. Belton FFA is a long history of excellence and statewide recognition, so we get to recognize a few, three teams, I believe.
Yes, four teams.
Well, let's see, four?
Yep.
Four teams, I'm sorry.
Let the room reset for a second.
Brad Hobbs.
Okay, we're going to reset the room so we can get the next group of parents.
Parents, ready? Okay, members of the Belton FFA chapter traveled to compete in career development events held across the state. In addition to previous district and area contest achievements, Belton FFA teams earned the distinction of state qualifier at each of those four events. On April 26, Belton FFA placed second in the state environmental and natural resource contest held at Tarleton State University. This impressive team previously qualified first in district, first in area. Team members include Drew Cook, Holden Goldston, Kyle Hobbs, Cameron Parker, Peyton Bigbriel, The Belton FFA wildlife team of Caitlin Quigley, Caden O'Brien, Amaris Reed, and Alex Otisani were first in district, fourth in area, and qualified for state after competing on April 24 at the Texas Tech campus in Junction. Congratulations, wildlife team. At the nursery landscape career development event held at Sam Houston State on April 27, a team of Belton FFA students also qualified for state. The team of Grace Green, Alexa Parr, Addie Ross, and Emily O'Braiden had previously achieved third in district and fourth in area.
He's got it.
Good job.
Ready?
Next one, you know, you're good, you're good.
There you go. Jump up on the riser.
And last but certainly not least, on April 28, the Belton FFA team of Francesca Landon, Amber Wilson, Celeste August, and Alyssa Herring also earned the state qualifier distinction at the Vet Science Career Development Event. This team had previously achieved a first in district and a fourth in area contests. Congratulations to all four of these teams and Brad Hobbs, the FFA advisor.
There we have Brad. Mr. Hobbs, get in there with the picture. Smile. See if you can get Mr. Hobbs to smile. Somebody make him smile. Sure proud of you all. Always represent Belton in a great way. We're proud of you all. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys. Well done. All right. Our next group of students we want to recognize are the Texas Bioscience Institute graduates. This is a really fascinating deal. These students have graduated from college before they graduate from high school.
That they have. We ready? Are they coming in?
So, bring them on in, and then we'll talk. I want them to hear this.
Yeah.
Hear us praise them.
As you alluded to, Mr. Pittinger, Alex Alafa, Allison Evatt, Channing Marsh, Joshua Meyer, and Hannah Smith were recognized in a special silver courting ceremony held by Temple College on April 11 for completing dual-credit coursework in the Texas Bioscience Institute Middle College Program. The TBI Middle College Program is a partnership with Temple College that allows qualified Belton ISD students to enroll in rigorous STEM-focused dual-credit coursework in their junior and senior years of high school. All five of BHS students also qualified to receive an Associate's of Arts degree from Temple College this month. Congratulations.
Big deal. Huge. All right, y'all group up and get some pictures here. These students have excelled not only at Belton High School, but at Temple College, TBI, and are well-prepared to launch on and do great things, like at ACU, right, Hannah? There you go.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, we're proud of you all. Okay, we'd like to recognize our Rotary Educator of the Month. We're thankful for the Temple Rotary Club sponsoring this.
Yes, our final one for this school year. We have an outstanding educator from Chisholm Trail Elementary, Candace Volz, and Candace was nominated by her principal, Ms. McMurtry. Candace is kindergarten teacher at Chisholm Trail, and she's in her 10th year in education all in Belton ISD. Ms. Volz maintains the priority of academic instruction in the classroom while balancing her time and efforts to meeting every child where they are. This includes growing students' social, emotional needs, and growing them into responsible students and ensuring their education career starts in a positive direction. Elizabeth McMurtry, principal at Chisholm Trail, stated, Candace is the consummate kindergarten teacher. Her positive, solutions-based approach to serve our children ensures growth for all of her students. Congratulations, Candace.
Aw, mommy! Way to pay. That's awesome. And your family's here. Thank you for what you do for our kids. I hear you got to go to lunch. Dr. King Cannon, is that right? Pretty cool. And Ms. Lee, probably. Very cool. Okay. Next, we have our Big Red Community Partner. Each month, we'd like to recognize one of our community partners who are connecting with us to help us educate and provide opportunities for our students. This is an extraordinary program, and it's been so great for us to recognize. We have a really special one this month for what's happened, but what's coming, too. And so, go ahead, we'll go ahead.
Belton ISD's vision is to be a leader in preparing every student to excel in tomorrow's world. That includes equipping students with the tools that they need for the jobs of the future, some of which don't even exist today. Workforce Solutions of Central Texas is an integral part of those efforts. For many years and in many different ways, Workforce Solutions of Central Texas has supported students by helping them to secure the employment, education, training, and support services necessary to succeed in the labor market and to match employers with the skilled workers they need to compete in the global economy. This summer, Belton ISD seniors will have the additional opportunity to apply for an eight-week training program to gain hands-on experience in computer networking and earn Comp TO certifications in A+ and Network+, thanks in part to the district's ongoing partnership with Workforce Solutions of Central Texas. For their commitment to Belton ISD's vision, Workforce Solutions of Central Texas is the Big Red Community Partner for May. Susan Camus, Executive Director of Workforce Solutions, will be accepting the award. Congratulations.
We're going to have her talk about this just a little bit, because this is an extraordinary program we're excited about.
Just, she covered it very briefly. This is a partnership with Belton Economic Development in the state of Texas. We were able to get a grant, and the TEDC, excuse me, BEDC matched it. Will be able to work with graduating seniors who are interested in careers in technology, and they'll be getting certifications that will enable them to go into any major company for employment. So, we're excited about that. It's a wonderful opportunity. I think this is the first in the area, and that's always important.
Amazing. Thank you very much for giving this opportunity to our students. We're really excited about it. Always good to recognize our students. So, hang on, hang on, let me say something before, while I still can.
Last chance.
Before I completely lose any opportunity. And I want to see if I can say something before I'm not able to. It has been a tremendous honor to serve our community and represent our community on this school board, and it's been an extraordinary honor to represent this board and our district throughout our community and throughout the state and even on occasion around the country. This is an incredible school district with high achievement, great community support, and it has been a great joy to be able to serve for the last 24 years on this board. Lega and I are deeply rooted in this community. We're not going anywhere. We're going to be here, we're going to continue to support our kids. We'll be at events, particularly between now and graduation, I plan on being at everything. So, I'm going to pretend that I belong and going to continue to be involved because we're invested heavily, and we're not leaving. I've had the opportunity over the last 24 years to serve with 25 different board members, some of whom are present tonight, and four superintendents. Some of those folks are among my dearest personal friends, relationships that develop. We work a lot of hours together, we work on a lot of important and difficult issues, but I'm really proud of the work that we've done. I've loved every minute of our dreaming and planning and developing strategies to address our challenges, and I'm thankful to have been part of a long legacy of excellence in this school district that came long before I got here and will be here long after I'm no longer part of it. I hope I've contributed in some way to that legacy. Thank you for the opportunity that we've had to be part of this. I love Belton ISD. Thank you. Okay.
All right. As usual, very well said.
I'll pass this on to Mike.
Well, thank you. I'll put it right there for the time being. And I'll take control of the next agenda item, which, as you have already hinted to, is the recognition, our final recognition for this evening, and a well-deserved recognition of our board president and longtime board member, Randy Pittinger. So, with that, I'd like to get started, if it's okay, with our Texas State Representative, Hugh Shine, who came, and thank you for joining us and want to say a few things. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Shine.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have a resolution that I'd like to present to Randy that we have from the House of Representatives, and also a special presentation of a Texas flag for you, Randy. And if I may indulge the folks, I'd like And if I may indulge the folks, I'd like to read the resolution. I'll try to be as quickly as possible. There was a lot of history here. We narrowed some of it down as best we could, okay? But I'll do my very best. And Randy, why don't you come over here and join me, okay? I've had the distinct privilege and pleasure of working with your school board president the last two years. And everything said about Belton ISD is certainly very true. A great school and a great community. And it's a privilege to be a part of that. And y'all have a lot to be proud of. You certainly do. So with this resolution, whereas Randy Pittinger is concluding his tenure as President of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees on this date in 2018, drawing to a close 24 years of dedicated service to the body. First elected as a trustee in 1994, he's served as board president since 2002. Deeply committed to his community and its youth, he's also given generously of his time to the district as President of the Lakewood Elementary PTA, the Belton Intermediate PTA, the Belton Junior High PTA, and the Belton ISD Council of PTAs. A lot of PTA experience there.
I was in the PTA.
And as a member of the Belton ISD Citizen Advisory Committees. And in addition, he served in a number of local and statewide boards and councils, including the Belton Educational Enrichment Foundation, BF, a great organization. Outside of his duties at the Belton ISD, Mr. Pittinger is a licensed clinical social worker and has a career in healthcare administration and maintains a private practice. He teaches part-time in social work and department at the University of Mary Harden-Baylor, graduate of Abilene Christian University, where he earned his bachelor's and his master's. He enjoys the love and support of his wife, Legay, and they take great pride in their three children and their eight grandchildren. And whereas the people of Belton have benefited immeasurably from his esteemed Texans' vision and leadership, and his efforts have helped provide countless local students with a strong academic foundation, which to build bright and prosperous futures. Be it resolved that Randy Pittinger be committed for his service on the Belton ISD Board of Trustees, that he be extended the sincere best wishes for the future. Congratulations, Randy.
Thank you.
You bet. And also, we have a presentation of a Texas flag. I took the liberty of making sure this was flown over Texas Independence Day since it was a day of significance. And so I'd like to present to you your certificate and the flag on behalf of our office.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Come on in. Thank you.
You bet. Get somebody to take it.
We are fortunate in this area and I don't want to miss an opportunity to tell you, not every school district has the opportunity to be represented by someone in Boston who supports public education. These days, that's not, there's not enough of them. But we have, and Hugh Shine is a supporter of public education, a supporter of Belton ISD, and we're so thankful. And it's been an honor to partner with you and look forward to continuing to advocate for public schools.
And Belton has an outstanding school system.
Here, I want to show that off a little bit.
Very good. Ready? Okay. One, two, three. Okay. Is that one?
Okay.
One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. You guys know what you do here.
Come on up. Go away. Come on up. No, not time to leave yet.
It's a little awkward.
Thank you, Mr. Shine. It's my understanding that...
You've never done this before, so I don't know how to act.
Yeah, come on, relax. It's my understanding that our city, Belton City Attorney, John Messer, former BISD board member, former BISD board president, would like to say a few words as well.
My friend, John Messer.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief. That's the one thing I was always better at, Randy. I was the last board president before Randy Pittinger. That was a long time ago. When I first got to know Randy and his service on the school board, I didn't really know if he was a fake or if he was on something. After a while, I realized this is who he really is. He is, he has that much energy, he has that much enthusiasm, he has that much love for every single child in this district and believes that every single one of them should have been treated the same every time. I've been on and, I was on and off the board from 1979 when I was 25 years old, if you can believe that, until 2002. Served with a lot of wonderful people, caring people, all of them were. And I wouldn't put Randy above all of them, but I can tell you this, nobody would be above Randy. He is what every board member should strive to be in every way. Randy will tell you that, I haven't been to a meeting since 2002 on purpose, but he and I have had hours and hours and hours of conversations about this district. And I just can't tell you how lucky we have been to have this man in his position as a member, but more importantly, as a school board president. So Randy, I wanted to be here and thank you for your service. I think they're going to do a little video later and my words were this. You know, when I left the board in 2002, and I think you will too, every president does, you worry a little bit. You don't know what's going to happen, what the direction's going to be. And then I paused and remembered that Randy was there and I never worried again. So for your service and for my peace of mind, thank you very much. Now, all that being said, when I was the president of the board, y'all, I guess you still get notes and things from students in school board week, lest you get a big head.
Yeah.
Lest you get a bigger head. I'm going to read you a note that I got from a student, Christina Purnell, January of 2000. She was in Ms. Potter's 4th grade class. This is her letter to me thanking me for being on the board. So remember this. Dear Mr. Messer, thank you very much for taking your time to be on the school board. We appreciate it a lot. If it wasn't for you, we would probably have one less person on the school board. So, don't let it go to your head.
Now to the less formal part of this recognition. Legay, do you mind coming up? Randy, we're going to move you into these chairs in front of the...
Can I say one more thing that I didn't say?
Turn off my mic.
Because John reminded me, and I have notes here, I just couldn't read them. It's all fuzzy. I've said this to the board and I've said this to many people. I couldn't leave something we've invested so much time into, as John alluded to, without knowing that we were in a good place. I have great confidence in the future of our school district because of the strength of our leadership. We have an exceptional superintendent who is the superintendent of the century, world, day, year. She's up for that award. I shouldn't, I don't mean to make fun of that. Superintendent of the Year Award, very deserving. She is exceptional and has strong leadership and has a strong team. And this board is filled with passionate and committed and dedicated servants in this community. And I am confident that I will be represented in this community in a great way. And so I can share with John that sentiment of I can leave with peace. And I know that Chris Floor is doing a great job, will do a great job of representing me as my neighbor. Okay. Where do you want me to go?
Right now.
Really? Seriously?
Yeah.
Is that our agenda?
Yeah, get them where they can see. We can just slide those out.
Well, hi.
Don't sit down yet. I've got to move these chairs.
Yeah, there you go.
Right there? Is that good?
They won't feel...
We'll move when we do the video.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why are you looking like that, Randy?
I don't know what's happening. I spend a lot of energy being, knowing what we're doing, and I know you still know what we're doing.
And I know you're more comfortable behind this than out there in the open, but just bear with us. All right, first. We have something from the rock behind the man.
Well, I want, we want to give Legay some flowers this evening for her service to the district as well. Legay has been a teacher in Belton ISD for 25 years, a little bit longer than Randy, huh? 25 and 24. And she has been steady and such a great support and an important part of the school district. And we just appreciate you, Legay. Legay is always at all of the events and kind of behind the scenes, quietly networking with the kids and loving on the kids. And she is just a joy, full of grace and kindness and love, and has done a beautiful job. So we thank you.
She must need to do a lot of other stuff and has been, we've got a partnership in this. So, yes, thank you.
Okay. I'd also be remiss if I didn't note that Penny Digby is here, former long-term Vice President of the Board, serving with Randy. And Penny, thank you for coming. And if at any point you want to jump up and do anything, you're welcome to or say anything.
I wasn't going to do that. I'll cry. But we've had a deal since PTA, and I've worked with Randy for 15 years on the board. And our deal was always what's best for kids. And I just want to say that in every decision that was made, whether we agreed, been agreed or whatever, I never questioned your vision or the vision that you had because I knew that you were doing and leading from what you thought was best for all kids. And I appreciate that immensely. And even more than that, I appreciate the friendship that you've built. And Legay, that's all my kids. And I just can't, buddy, kind of tell me if you mean and if I can. And I know you'll still get everything in this district, and I look forward to seeing you as a family. And just from the very bottom of my heart, I can't help but to what you've given and I need to hear.
Thank you, Penny. All right, now I'd like to give the board an opportunity to say our thank yous and goodbyes to you individually. So Jeff, do you mind starting?
No, starting's easy. I can take over everything here and not have to worry about it. I'm starting my third year of my first term. And getting into the school board, you really don't know what you're getting into. You have no clue. And the one thing I can say, and everybody has talked about Randy and what he's done for the district, how he's been here, and he is very, y'all see him, you know that. What you don't know, which I could steal because everybody's coming after me, is as a new board member coming on, Randy, I could not imagine having anybody better than you direct and lead. There's so much that you don't know coming on. And you don't, not every school board president takes the time to sit with new ones and explain. And we ask questions that you just want to shake your head, but you were there every time. Text messages, phone calls, and I think the best way I could say it is, you, for a new board member coming on, you give us something to strive for. Thank you.
My turn?
Yes.
Okay. So Randy has been on the board since the year before my oldest son was born, and he just graduated from UT this weekend. So if that puts anything in perspective for you. He's been here a while and has helped with the leadership of this district in a major way. Just like Jeff said, he was a huge example to me and gave me and Ty coming on this last year all the information and detail we needed. In fact, when we went to training this last summer, he sat right there with us through classes he could just teach himself to new board members and helped us understand everything we needed to understand. And I appreciate everything you've done, Randy. I will say, you know, John Messer just said he's an example every board member should strive to be like in every way, and I agree. However, that's not possible because there will never be another Randy Pittinger. I mean, if you tried to be Randy Pittinger, I just, I don't know how you could. I mean, he's remarkable. You're a remarkable person, and I don't know how in the world you have the energy to do what you've done over the last years and never get burned out, never get tired of it. You just kept going year after year. And it really is an example to strive for, but I don't think we'll ever quite measure up to that. So thank you for all you've done for Belton ISD.
Well, my family's been around Belton for a long time, and you served with my Uncle Jay a long time ago. And I always knew who you were. And I remember when I did the Booster Club thing years ago and I took over the Booster Club. It took over a year, but in that second year, Randy finally came up to me and he knew my name. And I thought I had finally arrived because Randy knew who I was. Because it meant a lot to me for Randy to know who I was, and he recognized me because I was serving our district. So when I thought about running a little over a year ago, he was one of the examples that I used for what I wanted to be like on the board. My uncle, Mr. Messer, many others, I've known, you know, H. E. Cowan, I've known these people my whole life and they served. But Randy was such a good example. And I just, I was so, I will be honored for however long my term is. And being at large, I have no idea what will happen. I'd like to have a long service term, but I'm honored to say that I got to serve with you on the board. That will be a highlight for me through my years. And I, he's a barnabus for everybody, and that says a lot. He does have a heart of a servant, a true heart of a servant. And he's a man of God and he's a man of BISD, and he bleeds red. And y'all know, because y'all all sat here during the naming and all the things that went on, and I was the one to send vote on the color. And it didn't really hit me until I went to a funeral for Harry Wilson. And I've told you this story, but I need to say it one more time. And when I walked into the auditorium at Belton Baptist Church and I saw that tiger-red casket, I realized how glad I was that I was wrong. And you were right, we are a Big Red Community. And I thank you for what you've done for all of us, the kids, teachers, the administrators. We really, there's two big issues we can't fill, but thank you, Randy.
Okay. I'm going to start with Ms. Legay first. So Ms. Legay, I just really want to thank you for being my ride or die when we go out of town, we sit together, we fellowship. You're just amazing. I appreciate you. I know that this community appreciates you allowing Mr. Randy to do what he does, and that's to just be at all of these events. And a lot of these events, you're right there with them. We had a jitterbug good time at the Harlem Knights. So next year, you know, we can all now be members, right? So we need to join. Mr. Pittinger, I want you to know, I've heard it said that sometimes the only Bible that people will ever see is how you live your life. You live your life in such a way that it is evident that you have a servant's heart. You have such a genuine love and passion, not only for the kids but for this community. You set the bar high. And as others have already said, we're never going to be able to reach there. But I will let you know without a shadow of a doubt, there is nothing and no one who will ever be able to measure up to what you do. I know you say you're not going anywhere. I know the two of you are just ingrained in this community, heart and soul, really appreciate the friendship, just absolutely love you both to death. And I'm going to stop right there because, you know, sensitive like that. And Randy told me not to cry.
Thank you, Sue. You almost made me cry. Well, I would start the way Randy would and shift straight to Legay. Behind any school board member that has served as long and as hard and spent as much time, passion, dedication... Behind any school board member that has served as long and as hard, um, and spent as much time, passion, dedication to, um, what's best for kids as Randy has, there has to be someone to, uh, behind all that supporting him. And thank you, Legay, for doing that, thank you for everything you've done for Belton ISD, um, and thank you for sharing Randy with us, with me, for the last, um, 11 years, and with Belton ISD for the last 30 or however many. You know, Randy, uh, spent a lot of time on PTAs, and, um, that's perfect for Randy, because he, you know, the, the P in PTA is what Randy's all about. He loves, loved being a parent, loves being a parent, and he always encouraged us, and I appreciate this every time he's ever said it to me, um, is that, uh, when there's a conflict with an event or with a meeting, it didn't matter how important it was, um, he would always say, "You need to be a parent first," and I appreciate that. Randy, uh, for me, serving on this board has been a rock, um, he's been an inspiration. The things that he does outside board meetings and board activities, um, inspire me, but the things he does and has done inside board meetings and board activities really inspired me. He is, um, one of the best leaders I have ever been around and have been fortunate to consider him a mentor and a friend for the last 11 years, and I look forward to that continuing. There's a million things I could say, unfortunately, in a pressure-packed situation like this, I can't think of them all, but, um, but Randy, I will personally very much miss having you sitting up here, um, at the board meetings, and I feel sorry for the person that follows you in the president's role. Thank you, Randy. All right.
I made some notes, um...
That was a good idea.
I did, I had to, um, well, I think, Randy, what you've done here has, um, been nothing short of amazing. And when you started 24 years ago, the district had less than 6,000 students, and we looked it up, I think it was 58, about 5,800 students in Belton ISD, which is about half of what it is today. Um, there was no New Tech, there was no North Belton Middle School, no South Belton Middle School, no Lake Belton Middle School, no High Point Elementary, no Chisholm Trail Elementary, no Tarver Elementary, and I don't think Purtle Elementary came on until after you were on the board. There was no Swim Center, no Ag Barn, no Automotive Technology Facility, we didn't have Orchestra, Engineering, Computer Science, and a number of other programs that have been added over the years, and I've probably forgotten some things there, but you helped us grow, um, you had a great vision, and you continued to reset your vision and, as the district grew, um, and you learned, and, and we came along as a district. Um, you provided support to the superintendent and the administrative staff, um, so that we could be as productive as possible, and I really appreciate that. You mentored new board members and showed them the ropes, you even sat through the SLI new board member training probably 20 times, or more. You've been a champion and a cheerleader for the students and for the staff and for me, and I appreciate that very much. Um, one thing I have always admired about you is your positive approach to life. You, um, you have the ability to see the good in everyone and in every situation, and not everyone has that ability. You listen for perspective, and you always try to hear everyone's viewpoints. Um, I also, um, have appreciated your courage and your ability to stand in the middle of chaos. We've done some chaotic things over the years as we've grown, um, you always address problems head-on, um, and you would talk to people for hours, um, if they were upset, and, and help us get to resolution of problems, um, all kinds of problems, attendance, boundaries, bond elections, um, you name it, and there's, there's no doubt that you love this district, the students, the staff, and the community, and you've definitely made an impact, um, that will last on, on all of the district and everyone here. So, Randy and I have had this joke, um, for many years, um, about what's next, what's next? And so, it was usually, we usually would say, "What's next?" when we did something hard, like Ebola, or, um, or we accomplished something really big, and he would say to me typically, "What's next?" And so, I would say, um, "We've, this is really hard, you're leaving," but I'm looking forward to seeing what's next for Randy Pittenger and Legay Pittenger, so, thank you for everything, appreciate you.
Okay, we're about halfway through.
Oh, come on.
We do have, uh, we do have some takeaways for you, so, um, we'll move on to the, we'll move on to the fun part now. So, the board and Susan, if we'll go out front here. Thank you. All right. First, and you'll love this.
I know what that is. I know who made that. Penny has one of these on her wall in her office, she was showing off, showing it off to me the other day, um, and now I have one. Greg Sullivan on our construction trades. What do you call that? It's red stuff, but look. Very cool.
Acid.
Oh, yes.
Bar you all from not going to the museum. We have lifetime passes.
Yes.
Is that what you want?
I get in, they're gonna let, let us in. We can go, please.
Those are much more valuable than those.
They'll let me in, right? There you go.
So, here's a gift from your fellow board members, and from my understanding, this is 30 years in the making, uh, and it's a, I guess, a quilt, a blanket, a t-shirt from your district.
30 years out there, we're washed. Can I open that?
Let's open it, yes.
This looks like kale.
Oh, man, look at that.
Oh, mercy.
Oh, hang on.
Okay, y'all hold it so I can look at it. Oh, wow. How awesome is that?
That's really nice.
Oh, it's history.
These are all of your shirts that you've had, the leaves, the baby, slash, the people.
I have a lot of shirts in my closet. We went to Disney with the band. Wow. Thank you, thank you. Oh, my. Wow, thank you, that's extraordinary.
I wrapped this myself, Randy. I opened it to make sure it wasn't open, and this was the only tape I could find, my daughters had this puppy tape. This is on behalf of the, of the board as well, so, for you, for you drivers.
Yeah, I very much, you got a knife, aren't you?
So, and I, I did this, uh, because these are really, really nice, by the way, but if you'll open that up, this is gonna carry you through your retirement days, and because you're gonna be like the rest of us in the cheap seat, I have to put a few seats laid in the foot on there. You know, the kids look a lot smaller where we're all used to sitting, so, those are really nice, and the black and the black.
That's awesome. Okay, y'all may not know, we're going to Alaska in June, because I can't be here when they need, uh, so we're heading downtown, so we're gonna go look at wildlife. So awesome, thank you. Cheap seats. That's awesome.
All right, so, we have, uh, they have prepared a wonderful, beautiful video to kind of highlight just some things of the last few years of your life, they can't do it all, Randy, because that would be like, you know.
Yeah, nobody wants to sit in there.
But, uh, you know, the thing about Randy is, it doesn't matter after this, because leaders lead and servants serve, and you'll continue to do that, it doesn't, it doesn't matter where you are, you're gonna do that because it's in you, that's who you are, and we have absolutely no doubt about that, so y'all enjoy this, this little film.
Okay, Randy, we saved some time for you to say any last words, if you want to, you don't have to.
Thank you, thank you, you, uh, your words are, um, your friends, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We're gonna take a picture?
Oh, you can organize it if you like.
Susan, you better get in here, that's too much spots.
I'm good.
I know my place. You all are very important, um, and you, you've had a great impact on our lives, um, and on our families, we felt like we raised our kids, um, and made us better. Opportunities we've had, uh, the relationships we've developed, and, all with you all, uh, the time together. We're doing great work here, it's about our kids, uh, because I make the voice, so excited for what Chris brings to the board, and I look forward to it.
Transitioning.
And handing on, so, thank you all, that's very honoring and very kind.
Thank you.
I hope y'all don't find out the real truth, that I'm really not that current. Let's keep the illusion for, at least until I get out of the room, and then you can talk about it, right?
Well, hopefully you will stick around, stick around for, uh, an agenda item about two down the road here. Grabbing my stuff out here. See if I can gather my stuff. Do some help, ready? Don't forget your flowers, I'm gonna take my name tag.
Okay.
Because it's not gonna get greasy good.
Connie's taken care of us. All right, sorry. Okay, now we have, uh, an empty seat to fill, thank you, Janet, for turning on my mic. Oh, you didn't? Sorry, I left my mic on, my apologies. Okay, so, Chris Floor, come on up. Time to take the oath of office, and if you'll stand just right up front somewhere. Yeah, right over here. Perfect, right in the middle, in front of everyone.
Looks a little different from up here.
All right, so Connie, if you will, uh, proceed with giving, um, Chris the oath of office?
Chris, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, where I state my name, please state yours. I, Connie Burns.
I, Chris Floor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of school board trustee.
Of the office of school board trustee.
For the Belton Independent School District.
For the Belton Independent School District.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You would please sign your oath?
Now come on up. You're in. I feel like I gotta, I gotta go down the road here. All right, congratulations, Chris, welcome aboard, and I see you have guests with you, do you mind introducing them and? They weren't ready for this, were they? I've got my lovely wife, Rayanne Floor, uh, and two of my three, I've got Madison Floor, who's at North Belton, and then I've got the terror, I mean, uh, George, George, who is about a year away from, uh, tearing it up at Lakewood, so... All right, well, good to have you all here, thanks for coming. All right, so, the, um, next item on the, is it, Chris, do you want to say anything? Or you, I don't want to miss an opportunity, if you want to, if you want to say anything, you don't have to, don't feel obligated. I mean, I, all I'm gonna say is, I can't say how excited I am to...
I mean, I, all I'm gonna say is, I can't say how excited I am to be part of this group and to be part of the Belton ISD family. Some of you have heard this story before, but, you know, we've been in the area for six years, and, um, you know, kind of moving out to the Wild West was tough.
Uh, we're from the, from the East Coast, and, uh, you know, part of our, um, part of our decision to come out here was really based on sort of our tour and our interaction with the, the faculty and staff and everybody here at Belton ISD. You know, it was amazing to us as we went through and trying to, trying to figure out where we were gonna settle, just the, the, the care and character, um, and, and just complete respect and care for the children, the children that we experienced when we visited Belton ISD. And so, you know, it, you know, our requirement quickly became, we will live within the boundaries of Belton ISD. And so I, you know, I can't say how proud I am to be, you know, part of the family, um, and part of the just sheer awesomeness, uh, that really is Belton ISD. Thank you, Randy, um, you know, for, for being a part of that. Thank you, Randy, for giving me a nudge to, uh, to step in, and, and again, I, I just can't say how excited I am to, to be part of this group. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're glad you chose Belton ISD, it's good to have you here. And we look forward to...
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
HEB will never be the same again, Chris.
All right. Thank you, Ty.
They're always out there looking for you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is, uh, reorganization of the board, as we, as we have historically done, um, with a change in a board member, we, we also go through reorganization of the, of the, uh, the board officers, so... Uh, the floor is open for any nominations?
I was, oh, go ahead. I was gonna do a block nomination. Uh, I'd like to nominate Mike Cowan as president, Sue Jordan as vice president, and Leo Camden as secretary.
Okay. We have a nomination for Mike Cowan, president, Sue Jordan, vice president, and Leo Camden as secretary. Are there any other nominations? Ain't none? We just need to...
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. We just need to take a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, we have office. All right, now we're gonna reorganize seats.
Someone's gotta turn Mike's, uh, mic on.
I'll do it.
That's your job if you sit by my mic.
Yes, I appreciate it.
That's the job.
Hope you guys are good. Of course, I left my name.
Thank you.
What am I gonna do without Janet?
We could use a little air conditioning, though. Somebody could, there you go, thank you, Dane. Yeah, you're welcome. It's getting a little stuffy.
Okay, I think we're ready to move forward with the agenda now. And the first thing up is Dr. Kinkanen with, uh, superintendent's report.
All right, I wanted to give you a little bit more information about the COMP TIA program that Susan Commas, um, told you about earlier during our, um, partnership award. But this was a partnership that was developed between the BEDC, Belton Economic Development Corporation, Workforce Solutions of Central Texas, and Belton ISD, and we've been planning, um, for this for many months now. Uh, it, this program will be an eight-week training program offered to students who are graduating this year, um, and they will be able to receive the two certifications that, uh, Mrs. Commas mentioned, the A-plus and, and the Network Plus. And then, um, they'll be placed in some positions, the Workforce Solutions will assist them in job placement, placement. We're calling this the Belton IT Training Academy, um, and it is a part of a high demands training grant program, um, that was written, a grant that was written by the Workforce Solutions of Central Texas. So the grant was for thirty-five thousand dollars, and the BEDC matched that grant for another thirty-five thousand, uh, dollars to bring that up to seventy thousand. We'll have thirty-six students, um, to be served, that's our target, and fourteen of those, according to the grant guidelines, must be economically disadvantaged or have a documented disability. Our workforce development specialist, Stuart Van Orden, um, who were offices at our Health Science Careers Building, is assisting with the recruitment of students, and, um, those fourteen qualifying students are eligible for a stipend to participate. So, um, they'll come two days a week and they, they'll get paid for that. Um, we've had two student meetings and one informational parent meeting, um, to recruit students for the program, and then last week they began to assess, uh, students with a little twenty-minute test to see where they are, so they know where to start the curriculum and instruction. They're hoping to get students who are in the, uh, who wanna go into a career in the IT field, um, and then there's no, no cost to the students. So we're paying for the certi, the class and the certification. If I'm correct, it's valued at about twenty-five hundred dollars a student. Again, it's an eight-week program, and that will run, uh, beginning in June, all the way to August third, and we'll be providing some technology assistance to, uh, COMP TIA. And, um, then we'll also provide students with some help with writing resumes and preparing for job interviews. And then on the screen there, you can see that the BEDC has, um, created a website for that partnership. So we're really proud of this program and, um, really thankful for the partnership of Workforce Solutions and the BEDC. Just to mention about some of our summer programs, it's last week of school, next week, and we, we all got all the way through the school year, um, very close to graduation, and, and people think that when we get to summer, everyone just goes home and we're done. Um, but that's not really the case, there's a lot, there are a lot of things that happen in the summer, um, and a lot of summer programs for our students. So our staff has been busy at the central office preparing for the summer and our kids who will be involved. Um, we, those programs will begin June the fourth. We offer summer school for acceleration and remediation for high school students. We have reviews for Summer Star testing for fifth and eighth grade, also for high school students needing to pass EOCs. Uh, we have programs to meet the stu, needs of students in bilingual ESL, in our gifted programs, and in special education. We're also, again, for the second year, offering an academic enrichment program for students at Miller Heights Elementary and Southwest Elementary, that's called Summer Adventures in Learning Sale Program. Um, we have about ninety students enrolled for GT Summer Camp for students in grades three through eight. And then Coach Morgan and his staff are offering a number of athletic camps. Something new this year is, I believe is new, is a six-week UIL approved Strength and Conditioning Summer Program that will be held at the Athletic Comp, Complex. Um, and then we have football, basketball, baseball, softball, tennis, and soccer, all the way for students going up to the, entering ninth grade. Um, all of that information can be found on the Belton Tiger Athletics, uh, website, belton tiger athletics dot com. And then, of course, we have our summer feeding program, which will be held at multiple sites. That information is on our website, um, you can see those locations and times. Some, some of the locations are just serving lunch, some are just serving breakfast, uh, but we've been pushing that information out to our parents. So, um, a lot of things happening this summer, and we just really appreciate our staff and, uh, all their efforts to prepare for that. The next item, um, I wanna talk about our, our school start times for next school year. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, we have been working, Dr. Muller has been working towards the implementation of a three-tier bus routing system. We've talked a little bit about this, um, in the past, but this is a new system that we propose to start this fall, which would eliminate, um, our docking, current docking system that has been in place for many years in Belton ISD. And we're, we feel that over time, changing that routing system will result in, um, in savings in route times for students. Will save us in the number of buses needed, and in the number of drivers that we need, and it, and it will, um, basically just make us much more efficient all around. It's a big change. In order to implement the system, we, um, we need a staggered approach to our school start and end times, so that our buses have ample time, uh, between elementary, middle, and high school runs. Um, and that causes the need for us to change our school start and end times for next year. There would be no changes in the start and end times for our elementary students, but we would propose that middle school start and end times would be ten minutes earlier. Uh, moving those times from eight-twenty to eight-ten in the mornings, and from three-fifty-five to three-forty-five in the afternoon. At the high school level would be the most significant change, and that would, um, ca, would be a thirty-five minute later timeframe. So we would move high school from eight-fifteen to eight-fifty in the mornings, and from three-fifty to four-twenty-five in the afternoons. Um, Dr. Muller's been working with the transportation consultant, um, regarding these changes. He's met with DEWIC to get their feedback, he's visited with our athletic staff and our band staff. And it, it's, it will be a big shift for us at the high school level, um, but it's a first step for us to creating some greater efficiencies, um, over time within our transportation department. So our next step, um, is to begin to work to create routes, um, absent a dock, and begin communication of those routes to parents, um, and the community this summer as we, um, identify those routes for each student. Also, um, we'll have some logistical things that we need to work through administratively, um, re, in regards to, um, just times, athletic practices, band practices, um, in order to align with the new schedule. And so that is, um, what we're looking at for next year. Do you have any questions about that? Yes?
The nine?
Uh-huh.
Will it follow the high school then?
It will, they follow the same bell schedule, and actually, students move from the nine over to the main campus for classes. Good question. Anything else?
When will you start communicating that new schedule out to parents?
Yeah, I, I expect, um, we can, we can communicate the start and end times early, but as far as specific route information, it will be into July and August before we get those to parents. So that'll take, they'll take some time to develop those. Anything else? All right, um, Lake Belton High School, wanna thank each of you. We already talked a little bit about the groundbreaking, um, ceremony that was held last Thursday, but I wanna thank you for being there, um, sweating with us, as it was probably about a hundred degrees under that tent. Um, but I'm very appreciative to Elizabeth and her team for all the work that they did. We've had great compliments about the event, um, and we're just really excited that now the real tractors, the tractors are really moving the dirt out there today, um, and that school's going to be built, so we're excited. Any questions about Lake Belton High School? Anything about the event? All right. Um, and so now we will shift our attention to the attendance boundaries process. So, we, one big chunk at a time, and the next big chunk is attendance boundaries. And we have, um, as I mentioned before, been busy preparing for that process that will occur this fall. Of course, you know that we're going to rezone elementary, middle, and high school all at the same time. Big, a really big project for us. And, and the reason for that, um, that change is that we wanted to be able to have our ninth graders who enter the nine in the fall of twenty nineteen be able to know if they're going to Belton High School or Lake Belton High School when they are a ninth grader. So the school won't be open yet, but by having those attendance boundaries done earlier, students will know when they register for their ninth grade classes, whether they'll be a Tiger or a Bronco. And we think that'll be good for those students. So, um, our target date for that is January of twenty nineteen, just before the preregistration for the fall. And of course, we need those attendance boundaries next spring for our students entering Charter Oak Elementary. We've identified approximately fifty-five people to serve on our, uh, attendance committee this fall, um, and those are parents representing every campus in the district, city representatives, community members, and, um, teacher and departmental staff representatives from across the district. And then we do, uh, intend to begin meetings at the end of August. Those will be posted as board meetings. Um, they will be open to the public for anyone to join. The public is welcome to participate in that process. And then this summer, I, um, will be planning a board workshop for you all, and we'll try to get Bob Templeton to come down and visit with you about that process, so you have a better understanding of what that will look like when we bring that committee in in August. So, thank you for pointing that out last time, Ty. So any questions about attendance boundaries? All right. Next big step, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kinkanen. And next item on the agenda is, um, with the progress that we're making on the, uh, Wall Street Auditorium, it's time to assign a name to that facility. And Dr. Kinkanen, I think you're going to...
I will lead that.
Lead that?
My paper. I don't think we have ever had a name on the auditorium that sits next door. Thank you, you're gonna have to turn my button on. As far as I know, there has never been a name on this auditorium that we're renovating. Um, I knew it first as the EDC Auditorium, and then somehow, over the years, it became the Wall Street Auditorium. But, uh, we're finally hoping to give it a name this evening. Um, this auditorium was built in nineteen sixty-six, and was designed to serve a thousand and ten seats, and, uh, at that time, the district had, uh, this was the high school, and there were about twenty-eight hundred students in Belton ISD, and that was a really big building for nineteen sixty-six to be built. It cost about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, and it has served the community for fifty years, over fifty years. Um, it has been used for student performances and assemblies, the Lions Club Show, Baccalaureate, and other special events, and most recently, uh, Belton New Deck High School at Wasco, and Bel, and the Belton Early Childhood School, um, used that facility for programs like the Veterans Day, uh, annual event that we've held, and, uh, Beck's Pre-Kinderergarten Program. And also, we have, over the years, rented that facility out to the community, um, for special meetings, programs, musical performances. So, um, we included this facility in our capital proj, projects, um, planning document in twenty fifteen, when the board was reviewing, um, the projects that they would like to complete. And as a result of that, it, the facility, facility had never been renovated, so we put it on the list, um, and as a result, when we were going through the bond planning process for twenty seventeen, um, the board decided to add this, the updates to this auditorium to the bond program. And as you know, that was approved by our voters last year, and, uh, so it's currently under renovation, and we're really excited about it. So tonight, um, the recommendation is to name the Wall Street Auditorium, the Pittinger Fine Arts Center, in recognition of Randy Pittinger's twenty-four years of service to Belton ISD. Randy, as you know, loves to attend student events, and, uh, regularly, almost nightly, attends student performances all across the district. He especially loves elementary musical performances, and he's been a champion for dance and band, um, at the secondary level, and, um, he celebrates, um, our fine arts programs and community events that highlights children. So, it's my recommendation that we name the Wall Street Auditorium in honor of Randy Pittinger.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we name the auditorium the Pittinger Fine Arts Center.
Motion from... Sorry. A motion from Janet?
I'll second the motion.
Second from Jeff. Any comments, questions? All right, all in favor, raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Come on up, Randy. Come on up, Randy. One more thing. It is rare in our school district that we name a building after a person. I think it is very appropriate in this case for all of the reasons that you all have heard, that you all have heard this evening, and everyone in here knows Randy. But I think this is one of those opportunities where it makes perfect sense, especially for this building, which will be a performing arts center for our kids. But it's also going to be a great amenity for the community, and Randy is a big fan of Belton and Belton ISD. So, I think it's perfect that this building will have your name attached to it. So, thank you. Thank you. All right. It now has a name, no longer the Wall Street Auditorium.
It'll have a sign at the end of, end of the summer. Jared's going to talk about that.
Thank you. That's way beyond the reasonable expectations, anything I could imagine. So, honoring, what's most significant about it is we are renovating a facility that our children will be able to perform and excel in, and that is what we dreamed about for many, many years. I'm excited about that coming into, back into great use and being used, and it's gonna be really fun to go watch our little bitty ones from pre-K, Albert Beck's, like we were talking about that the other day, all the way up through high school and our community uses it. Wow, that's amazing. Thank you. You're welcome. Very gracious.
Thank you.
Very person, very humbled by that. Thank you all. What do I do with this?
That is to, that will go inside...
That's going in the building.
In the building, in the lobby, but...
That's pretty cool.
For now, if you like.
I should have taken that back, huh? Don't take off with that.
You can hold it for a little while.
Enjoy it.
I wonder if so are kids and grandchildren in that thing.
Yeah. I'm sure they'll be in the building, too.
At least exercising is like a pass.
Yes. You have a pass to get in there as long as you want. Now, a little bit further into the 2017 Bond Projects, Jared Sturzinger, our architect from O'Connell-Robinson, has a presentation for us, an update on the Bond Projects. Jared, thank you for joining us, as usual. What a great partner in these projects. We appreciate everything you've done, and I personally appreciate seeing you at the Lake Belton High School groundbreaking and your participation in that. I thought what you said was very well said, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Honored to be here then, or now, as well as then, and to be able to support Belton ISD. And I will say, I wish I could build a 1,000-seat auditorium for $175,000. Just escapes me just a little bit, so... But tonight, this is the May update, so we've been working just about four to five months now on the projects for Charter Oak Elementary School, Lakewood Elementary School, now the Pittinjer Fine Arts Center, and then, as well as about a week on Lake Belton High School. Actually, it'll be six days on Lake Belton High School. So, take you through those projects. So, starting off with Charter, Charter Oak Elementary School. So, over the past month, really been working in the ground, is the way that I'll say it. So, you see, previously, we talked about the foundation, getting going on those segments of the building. And so, this month, actually, I think a week and a half ago, they completed almost the last pour on the building. So, the foundation is probably 95% complete. There's one little segment that they've got left going there. And you'll see then, in the bottom-left photo, that they've got the SCUDO, is what it's called. It's a floor protection, so at the end of the day, when we looked at the polished concrete floors, those are in place. And then, really, over the next month, we're actually gonna start seeing it come out of the ground. So, steel should be delivered here by the end of the month and start erecting the building from the far north side, so that's closest to the existing homes, and then, working south. In that time, they have been working on site elements like the detention pond and grading. That's coming to the final, and you'll see then, in the photograph, some of the retaining walls on site. And so, this is kind of that first third that I always feel like it takes forever to get out of the ground, then pretty soon here, you'll start seeing the building come out of the ground. So, very excited, working with Cloud on that one, and they're still staying on track for opening or completing their progress March of next year, from that standpoint. Now, the, what was the Wall Street Auditorium renovation, now the Pittinjer Fine Arts Center renovations here. So, over the past several months, this is, the first project was Cloud Construction. This one is with Mazonic. So, Mazonic has been working, really working on the interior of the building, and then, we were really, over the last month, working on the roofing of the project and working with some of the existing conditions we found there on site. And really, over then, the last month, they pretty much finished the roofing of the existing facilities, so they've been going day in, day out of pull off a section, replace the deck, put new roofing down, and kind of working from left to right. They've been able to then continue inside the building. The far-left photograph is the mechanical room, and then, the center building, or center image, is them starting on the site work. So, on this one, they're again on track to keep this one going and moving that forward from a construction perspective. And then, part of the construction process is really working through the cemental process, and this is on all aspects of the project. So, we designed something, we say that we want the door hardware to be this, they give us information back on the door hardware, and we go back. And so, one of the cementals that's of particular interest here is the signage. And so, we've been talking a lot about how the signage is integrated into the facility design and what that exactly will say. So, over the last week, Dr. Ken Cannon and I have been trading a couple of emails back and forth to really work that out. And so, ultimately, where we've started looking at is, you'll remember, this is a similar image to what we had presented before. You'll see then, at the back, is, of course, the Pittinjer Fine Arts Center, new entry here, so the entry in the auditorium. And we had looked at creating these low-rise walls here around the seating areas. The red inside this represents the pavers that are coming from Lake Belton, or from Belton High School in the front courtyard that are part of the Beef Foundation and moving those in. And we had originally proposed some generic signage initially, to be determined, and now worked into very specific signage. So, what we are looking at is, this is the Belton ISD logo in a dark bronze finish that will accent well against the existing stone on pin mounting letter, channel cut. We're gonna look at whether or not, how lighting might integrate it into that. And then, next to the Belton ISD logo, it would be Pittinjer Fine Arts Center. So, again, logo, Pittinjer Fine Arts Center. And then, as well, it's not quite shown in the photograph, you'll see the wall here, which is there on that side. There would be a similar logo, so as you approach from either sign, you'd be able to identify the entrance to the facility and would welcome you into the district and then, ultimately, into the auditorium as guests proceed from there. So, that is what we're currently proposing based on the approval tonight with the Pittinjer Fine Arts Center, and we would then work with the cemental process to finalize everything with the district there. Any questions on that one? Okay. So, and the last one is the Lakewood Elementary School, the music classroom and gymnasium addition. Here, this one has been coming out of the ground for some time with lots of hurrah's from the kids, while being able to watch the construction go on. So, originally, from out of the building into CMU and the exteriors. And so, now, the building is what I consider really starting to take shape. So, the left image is the gymnasium, and those holes will be skylights that look into the, that come into the facility, provide natural light for code requirements. Then, you'll see here in the center one, they've gotten the insulation on the exterior of the wall. The black is actually the air moisture membrane getting down to the through-wall flashing. So, basically, it's ready for the brick to go up. So, we'll start seeing the finishes come alive on that one brick on the lower, about 15 feet, and then, there's red metal panel to really help announce the school and a presence on the street there in front. And then, just a detail shot, as architects love to look at, termination bars, all that kind of fun stuff that, in the end, all gets covered up, but it makes sure that your building is dry. So, this one, again, Mazonic is working on this one and doing good on the progress here. And then, the final one, of course, everybody knows, we've been talking about Lake Belton High School. These are some of the images of the school. It'll look like this in just, just over two years, 2.65 years, I think, now is the official clock time. But Bart LaCock, your construction manager at RISK, is on this one. Last week, we were able to approve the GMP, provide notice to proceed. We've already had our first construction meeting, and as of this morning, they're on-site and moving dirt already. So, they've got subs in their contract and moving forward, along with, David is staying in touch on that on a daily basis, as well as the other projects. So, we're trucking along, and then, as you know, we had a small little groundbreaking, great event, lots of celebration, and look forward to then the ribbon cutting here shortly. So, I know that there's a lot of work left on the district side here as we get going, but two years, be there, so. With that, welcome any questions about the construction progress? Otherwise, that's our update for the month.
I just wanted to say one thing. Yesterday, I had my three kids in the truck with me, and we were driving out to the lake, and my son, who's been in Lubbock for a year, and my daughter, who's at the high school, who never does anything but go to the high school every day, we drove by Lakewood, and my middle child and my youngest daughter, they never knew another school but Lakewood, and my son got there in second grade. And so, my middle child, Rebecca, looked up, she goes, "Oh, my goodness." And everybody looked up, and my son goes, "Wow." So, the kids saw what was going on, and they were really proud, and they said, "Oh, our school's gonna be so much prettier." So, I know that my kids were excited, so I know that little community, that Lakewood community, I know that they're all feeling that same way, and the kids are out there every day watching, you know, the guys working. But I just thought that was really cool that my kids were so, you know, they were so taken by what's going on over there, so...
It's gonna be a neat face to the campus.
Any other questions for Jared, comments?
Thank you all very much.
All right, Mr. Schiller. Disponement, resignation, and addition of administrative board.
Yes, sir, thank you. This month, we have one recommendation for high, I'm sorry, for North Belton Middle School Assistant Principal Dominique White. That's the one recommendation we have. I don't think he's here, but Dominique's been a fixture here in the building for a while. He's a instructional coordinator for social studies, has about nine years of experience with us, and so, we're looking forward to him in his new role. And then, on top of that, we've hired 16 professional employees this month, and we've received 30 resignations.
Randy would be disappointed if I didn't ask...
Currently, we have 60 active positions. We're looking for, a lot of those are new positions that we've shared with him before.
All right. You have any questions, Mr. Schiller? Intend a motion to approve the recommendations, addition of personnel, as presented. Mr. Dager? Motion, Mr. Dager? Second, Mr. Flor. All in favor, raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Schiller. All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, it's about the time we finish up and approve salary increases from last time, or we get started on the upcoming year. So, in the fall, we participate in a survey from TASB, Texas Association of School Boards. About 600 school districts in the state of Texas participate in the survey, and that's where we find a lot of our data for positions. And we receive those results in January. We compare ourselves with eight surrounding districts, Temple, Bryan, College Station, Copper's Cove, Georgetown, Colleen, Midway, and Waco. Those are our comparable districts. We point out key positions. When you look through the survey, those are the key positions that you see there, lots of paraprofessionals, auxiliary positions, teachers, obviously, some professionals, administrator. Just gives us a clear picture of what the market is doing throughout a variety of our key positions that most districts share. So, that data is compared, we look at days' work, we look at number of staff that's involved in each one of those positions at the surrounding districts, we look at the minimum beginning salary, we look at the top of the range, the average salary being paid, and then, from that, we calculate a median of that, of each position. And so, our practice in the past is, when we fall below 90% of the market median, we take another look at those positions and potentially look at what we can do to adjust the salaries, assign a different pay grade, to make sure that we stay, remain competitive with the market. So, there's two positions that fell out this year, counts payable clerks, clerks, and bus drivers. Bus drivers are about 91% of the market median. Bus drivers has been a challenge for us this year in terms of just, it's just a shortage nationwide, and so, we're trying to do what we can to make sure that we're competitive and be able to offer a competitive salary to help attract and recruit quality staff. Also, during this time, we discuss, have a lot of discussions with districts, kind of figure out what's going on with their positions, what the market's doing, what they're looking for in terms of budgeting and planning, and most of the districts around us are looking at 2% to a 3% salary increase, and that's in the region 12 comparable districts to us. In addition, we also work very closely with the business office, making sure we plan and budget is a big part of it. We're looking, we'll hear in a minute, from Jennifer Land, we're looking at about a 2% increase is what we're, got in the budget proposals right now, and so, that would be about a $1,200 increase for teachers and about 2% of market median, I'm sorry, median range for all the other positions. Last thing I'd like to point out is, it's kind of hard to talk about salaries without talking about health insurance, just because the health insurance drives a lot of an individual's check, unfortunately. You'll see that listed there, the average increase overall on the, on the, on the health increases of about 5.8%, which really, in the scheme of things, from things you've heard with other organizations, 5.8% is probably pretty conservative, probably some of the other increases that you may have heard about. It varies. In terms of which plans receive the increases, you look at Scott &amp; White, there's a plan on there, I think it's the employee spouse plan that increased about 2%, but then, you see other plans where it increases 7%. But overall, across all those plans, the increase is 5.8%. I will point out, we have a little bit over 50% of our staff, out of the 1,160 people that are, that select the health insurance, are on that Scott &amp; White plan, and that's decreased over the years. There's been a lot of movement to that high deductible plan, which is the lowest plan offered. And, you know, when I first started several years ago, or when we first went to TRS Active Care, about 2011, we had about 75% of our employees on that Scott &amp; White plan, and so, you've seen that diminish over the, over the years, and it obviously cost as a player in that. Our district contribution is $375 per employee per month, and so, maintaining that contribution would keep us, with the new rates, still offering, be able to offer a free plan for employee-only coverage on the high deductible plan. Currently, right now, we have a 34, 35% employee coverage on that high deductible plan, so you can kind of see that that shifted over the years. And again, the highest increase on those health insurance plans went to 9%. On the Active Care II Plan, I will point out that that's a plan that has been grandfathered for this upcoming year, so any individuals that are on the Active Care II Plan can stay on the plan, but they will not accept new members going forward onto that plan.
It doesn't look like we have a lot of...
We do not. It's, it's, when you compare those rates and compare it to Scott &amp; White Plan, you can, they're, they're pretty comparable, so most people, obviously being in central Texas, select that Scott &amp; White Plan versus that Active Care II Plan.
Now, let's have a seat, it's $375 contribution. Still covers that high deductible plan.
Yes, sir. That premium permit is 367, so it would still be a free plan in the upcoming year, maintaining that 375 contribution. Any questions?
You have any questions? Look, good to you, being our insurance guru.
It is the market. I'm not gonna say, I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Until some changes are made, substantially, the entire system, I mean, increases are well in line...
Sorry. Increases are well in line with medical inflation, the demographics of our group, yeah. And you scroll down it, and you just look, and you see where, where the trends are going. That Active Care II, they're not taking new, and what is that, a 24-month runout? They're gonna close that plan completely out?
That's, that's my understanding, yes. And I will make one other comment. The TRS Active Care Plans, once you've elected, and as many of y'all know, once you elect to, to join that TRS Active Care system, there's no way out at this time. So, once you're, once you're a member, you're a member with TRS Active Care.
As the district.
That's the, as the district.
Any other questions, comments? We're not taking action on this, it's a report only, so for our information...
We're not taking action on this, it's a report only, so for our information, but it will be very helpful in the next presentation and as we move forward in the budgeting process. As you know, payroll's a big piece of our, of our general fund MNO budget, so good information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schiller. Appreciate it. And Jennifer Land, I think you're up next. Give us an update on the budget process.
Good evening, President Cowan. I have to get used to that. Board members and Dr. Kinkannon. Just quickly, I want to update you in terms of where we are on the budget. I'll start with our budget priorities. Nothing has changed here. Basically, we're here to, to serve our kids, and that's what this budget is, is designed to do. We also have the same revenue preliminary budget assumptions with the exception of, sorry, let me change the slide. With the exception of our local property tax values, if you recall, last time I stood here, an estimated 6%. But we did receive our preliminary values at the end of April, and they came in at about five, a little over 5%, 5.06% growth. But that is a conservative number, and we've been talking to the appraisal district, and in our meeting with them, they even confirmed that that is a conservative number. But that is one thing that we've updated in terms of our revenue assumptions. And then on our expenditure assum-, expenditure assumptions, like Todd said earlier previously, we have incorporated a pay increase into the budget that you'll see later. And we chose a 2% because that was a level that we felt comfortable at, and it was right in the middle of what we thought the market would do. So if you look at our preliminary versus certified values, where we've come in historically, as you can see over the past five years, we've been coming in about anywhere from, I'm gonna throw out those anomalies, 2 to, 2 and 1/2 to almost 3 and 1/2% in terms of the difference from our preliminary to certified values. We did have a couple of years where I think they may have been anomalies, 2016, they actually went down, and 2017 was slightly higher. But as you can see over those years, the past five years, it's about a 2 and 1/2% average. And so that's what we're looking at. And in terms of our revenue, I did three different scenarios here. The first one is your, is our preliminary values, and then the next scenario is if our certified, certified values come in at 7% or 8%. So as you can see, each percentage increase is about 400, a little over $400,000 in revenue for us. So right now, at, at our preliminary values, we're anticipating that we're going to receive about 98 and 1/2 million. Man, that's a large number, isn't it? In revenue versus at 8%, we were going, we're anticipating receiving almost $100 million in revenue. If you look at the expenditures, what we've done is we've given, we've sorted out our campus and department allotments, or campus allotments and departmental budgets. We did try a zero-based budgeting this year with our departments, and I think that went, that went very well. And, but with our, and with our campuses, we did do the student allotment. Our, our low socioeconomic campuses or Title I campuses did receive a, a little extra money in their budgets. But if you look at our general fund expenditures, you'll see that as school districts, and this is the same no matter what school district you, you're looking at, but our salaries are about 80, 80% of our budget. And I wanted to point that out because if you look at what we consider fixed costs, not fixed in terms of dollar amounts, but fixed in terms of you have to have these things such as utilities and insurance and some other items, that is another 5%. So if you look at our expenditure budget in aggregate, there's about 15% that the district actually controls. And I wouldn't even say control because even that other 15% is made up of things such as, you know, some leases that we have, it's made up of some items that we need for the classroom. So we really don't have a lot of discretion over our budgets. And right now, we're budgeting or estimating that our expenses are going to come in at about 99.9 million. But I don't want that to, to alarm you because if you look at our expenditures over our, our, over our revenue, at 5%, if we stay at the preliminary values, that means that we're going to have to take about a million and 1/2 dollars from fund balance. At 7%, it'll be a little over 600,000, and at 8%, about 200,000. But I wanted to point out that a lot of those are, about a million dollars of that are expenses that we anticipated taking from fund balance anyway. It was assigned fund balance dollars that we had, we talked about last year, such as the startup costs for the school and some special projects that the district allocates dollars for each year. So that's where we're standing, and we still would have a healthy fund balance in either of these scenarios. But I do want to point out that we are looking toward setting ourselves up to opening that new high school and the new campuses that we have. And that is our goal in budgeting and moving the district forward. So in terms of next steps, next month, we'll be looking at our, all of our budgets that are funds that you're required to pass the budget for, general fund, as well as child nutrition and debt service. And then in July, we will get certified property values. They usually come in July 20th, our board meeting is before then. So I will have to work with you, with Dr. Cannon, to see how we can get those revised certified or those revised estimates for the budget to you before we adopt the budget and set the tax rate in August. Any questions?
I think looking forward, for me, I'll be anxious to see how, you know, starting when we staff Charter Oak to when we staff the new high school, that's gonna be three schools with that new middle school within about a 12-month period of time. So how that's gonna, how the revenue and how it's all gonna balance, I'm concerned. And I think people, when they hear about that, it's concerning in the, in the district, you know, so it'll be interesting to see how that's gonna come together.
Staffing will be one of our challenges. You'll, one of the things that we're doing is adding some positions that we need now for some of our schools that are crowded and over capacity. And that, those, some of those positions will move to the new campuses. So for instance, we're adding some elementary assistant principals this year. We'll be able to, we'll be shifting staff around as, as some schools come down after the attendance boundaries process.
Our budget will already have.
Some of those positions will already be in the budget. However, we'll, we'll still need additional teachers, administrative staff, custodians, that kind of thing. So we'll be working through that process. So remember, big chunks of, of work to do to get us there. This is another big chunk of work that has to be done to get us to those, opening of all of those schools. And definitely one of our challenges. Not unlike any other fast-growth school district. Number one challenges.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Good. Good evening. So I have the pleasure of presenting part two of a five-part series on the accountability system. So I'll go over a few things to review what we talked about last time, and then kind of highlight, this evening, I'm gonna be bringing you domain one. And so as we move forward, just remembering that everything that we do in our district aligns to the district vision and what our district goals are, as our department works alongside with the campuses to align those things. So as we mentioned last time, House Bill 22 is the law that was put into place that said, Commissioner, you need to evaluate schools and districts assigning them an A through F rating. So this year, with our timeline, in August, districts will be assigned an A through F rating, but campuses will just get an improvement required or met standard rating for this year. And then next year, in 2019, then you'll have the ratings that will be put into place for not only districts, but also campuses. So there are three domains that, in the new accountability system. Domain one is student achievement, which we'll be talking into a little bit more detail this evening. Domain two discusses student growth. And domain three talks about closing the gaps, and we'll be looking at those in the further months. So one of the things that has come out with the new accountability manual is domain one is counted 70%. Domain two is 70%, but they're gonna take the better of the score. So if your domain achievement score is higher than your domain two score, it will take that score times 70% and vice versa. And then domain three does count as 30% of your rating. So that's how currently it's gonna, how they're gonna calculate and the weight of what domain is. So let's talk about domain one. It focuses only on student achievements. At the elementary and middle school, it only looks at STAR and STAR-Alt 2, which is our alternative assessment for students who are in a modified curriculum. And then at the high school, it looks at STAR-Alt, STAR, STAR EOC, STAR-Alt 2 EOCs, also looks at college and career military readiness and graduation rates. So we're, we'll talk in detail about those in a minute. So let's talk about elementary and middle schools. So how are they gonna calculate that? So in the past, I mean, it just looked, what's the percent of students that pass the test? Now, with the new accountability system, it's going to look at not only the percent of students that meet the approaches, but also looks at the percent of student who meets and the percent of student who masters. So if you look at that chart that you have in your, in your board packet, you can see what they do is take the total number of students and then finds the percent of who approaches, the percent of who meets, the percent of who masters, and then they take the percent of that, the average of those, and then they find the average again. So if you're a math major, you're like, "Oh, wait a minute, this is a little uncomfortable." And then it comes up with that, that will be your domain one score. So at 60.2 in this, for this example. So in elementary, and you might ask, what does 60.2 mean? They're gonna convert that to another number to find what your accountability is. So any questions about that so far? So let's talk about high school. So high school, 40% of a high school or a district's accountability will be with student achievement. So it'll look at student achievement, too. The percent of kids passing the EOC, other approaches, meets, and masters. Does the, the funny math again with the, the average of the average of that. So that's 40% of a high school's accountability. The next part, the other 40% of a high school's accountability then looks at, okay, so of our graduates, so the students who have graduated last year, how many of them are college-ready, career-ready, or military-ready? And how do we know they're college-ready? And so it will look at multiple components. So one way that we can see if a student is college-ready according to the accountability system is if they score three or higher on the AP exam, we'll say, "Okay, they're college-ready." If they meet TSI requirements, so if they make a certain score on the ACT, the SAT, or the TSI, or if none of those, are they enrolled in the college-ready reading class or math class? Another way that we can say they're college-ready is have they completed the dual credit course? Have they completed three hours for reading or an English class, or three hours of math, or nine hours in some other dual credit courses? Or they've earned an associate degree? Okay, so they're all college-ready if they meet one of those components in reading and math. So they have to meet both sides. And as if you notice, those are all tied to some sort of cost for either the district or a parent. Then we look at career-ready. A student, according to the accountability system, is career-ready if they have earned credits in a coherent sequence for CATE, that they've earned an industry-based certification. And they've come out with what, a list of these are what we will recognize as the industry-based certification. So it's just not any of them that we offer, but only a certain number. And then for our special education students, if they have completed their IEP and they're workforce-ready, and the R makes that decision for students. And then the last is, does a child have the intent to enlist into the United States Armed Forces? And that was in the law. So that's written in the law. So this was, that component was not a commissioner or the accountability committee that made that decision. That was written in the law that they want to track and hold public school accountable for people, students enrolling into the military. So that's 40% of a high school and district's accountability. So 40% in achievement, 40% as we've, we've been calling it the CCMR, college, career, military readiness. And then the last part of domain one, when it comes to high schools and districts, is the graduation rate, which we've always been held accountable for that, and that counts as 20%. And so it's gonna take the best graduation rate from the last three graduation classes. So it'll look at last year's, the year before, and the past year before. So then it will look at all three of them, which one is the best, and that's what they'll use the 20% for. So to kind of review, okay, so coming up in August or September, when those, the district rating comes out, where, what data's being used for domain one? So for elementary, it is the STAR data from this current year that we just finished assessing this year. The STAR data from middle school, so sixth through eighth in Belton. And then for high school and for the district accountability, we look at the STAR data from this current school year, but it uses the college and career military readiness graduates from last year in 2017. And then the graduation rates, the 20% comes from, like I said, last year's graduates or the year before, the year before that. And we usually run 98, 99% when we talk about graduation rates. So that is kind of the, the big picture of domain one on student achievement. Any questions? I know I'm pretty.
One of the superintendents we're talking about last week with the commissioner was, one thing was just how late the tests were this year and how hard that was on our schools, having those tests quite a bit later than normal. And then really still struggling to understand where we might land with this complicated system. And if you, you know, as you can see, it's really complicated, it's a complicated formula, and you really have to understand the math behind it to get any meaning from it. So when you think about rating the district on all of this criteria, you really have to understand approaches and meets and masters and the mathematical formula to get there. And so we, we won't fully understand what it means for us until we go through it and see what it looks like when we get our real scores in and our numbers.
Okay. All right. Thank you all.
Anyone have questions? Comments?
I'm just curious about the career readiness, right? So if you get two slides back, maybe it's two slides back, right? One down, there you go. So the upper right hand, it talks about the CTE cohort, or... Is that list of industry-based certifications, is that available for us to look at? I see Dr. Losman shaking her head. Yeah, okay. I'd be curious to see that list, if we can get our hands on that.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, it's an interesting list. And there's still quite a bit of discussion about what's included and what's not included. And I understand a lot of controversy from CTE directors across the state. A little disappointment that there are some things, I believe, like Adobe certifications are not, don't count. And then, yeah, it's just, it's just an odd mixture. So it's a little, that, too, is something that we'll have to figure out. I'm understanding better. You have any more comments about that, about certifications? We have that list.
Right, we have that list.
Okay. Happy to share that. We did share that list with our CTE advisory committee not too long ago. They took a look at that list with our businesses that came in and had a good discussion about it.
Well, thank you all. I will see y'all in June.
Still not a big fan of the A through F accountability system, but I am understanding it better based on these presentations. So thank you.
She's done a good job.
Angela T. Kell, how are you?
Sir, very good.
Board policy, FNG Local, first reading?
Yes. So last legislative session, the legislature adopted a bill that would allow a board to limit its local policy related to parent and student complaints by making grievances filed regarding extracurricular activities to be final at the administration's decision at Level 2. So we are proposing that we also make this change to our local policy. It basically states that grievances that are just limited to an extracurricular activity but that do not impact a school law of the state, which is Education Code, Chapter 26, or any special education or other federal law, that those decisions be made final at Level 2. And you see in the tracked changes version of the policy, it's just an addition of one paragraph. So we'll take a look, as we do anytime we change policy for a month. If you have any questions or concerns, we'll talk about those and bring it back to you next month. Anybody have any question? Okay. Thank you.
Next up, issues, concerns for future agenda or administrative reports. So Chris, this is where you have an opportunity, if there's something that you'd like considered for future agenda or in an administrative report, it's your opportunity to throw that out there. But we'll start with Ty. Ty, you have anything?
I guess with just the recent events that we have going on, I'd like to have a report on what we are in Belton ISD doing on different campus levels, elementary, middle school, high school, and put that out there for the public to hear that. I'd like to see that. And it just raised, this last event just raised a few questions in my mind. So I went through policy in the handbooks and different things, and specifically that one dress code item. And I didn't see that specific clothing mentioned in our dress code. I think that maybe that's kind of a no-brainer. You don't really need that in Texas, possibly. Maybe we could add that.
Happy to. We will be working on handbook updates for the summer, and we'll be talking about that. But happy to bring you a presentation on that.
Thank you.
I would add, you know, we have had a couple of presentations where we have talked about how we meet and even exceed the state regulations in regard to safety for our schools. And the thing is, is people don't really know the details on that. So I think it would comfort people, and even us, you know, to really know the specifics on what that means.
Okay. Anything else, Ty? Chris?
I'm still very much drinking from the fire hose, so.
All right. Soup?
I'm just curious about bullying and if there's, if we have a high number reported at any particular campus, if it's all, if the numbers are all the same, if we can just kind of look and see what that looks like.
Okay. Let me have to think about that one. We, you know, you're talking about bullying totals. Okay, we'll get back with you on that one. We haven't collected totals, but I'll work on that.
Janet?
I think mine is in reference to Ty's also. It's just a little bit different. And I believe our next board meeting will be after we get back from.
It's on.
Okay. And I may get some answers there. But one of the things that I have read and I've looked into since the event this last week, and I hate that we even have this discussion, but it's a very real discussion. And in reading through it and in reading the experts, one of the things that has come up that I am curious about is the idea of secured entrances into schools. That seems to be, as much as I hate to say that, the only logical thing I've seen put out there that is secured. And we all go into the schools quite a bit. And yeah, it crosses my mind that, you know, it really wouldn't be that difficult. Just something I, and I think that, in fact, I'm positive, it will be addressed at the school board convention.
Yeah, there'll be a number of sessions there. And then the whole focus of the TASSA Summer Conference this year is on school safety. And as you know, we posted a position recently for a safety coordinator for the district as well. So that'll be the focus of much of our work this summer.
Okay.
I know that when you, the high school is the biggest concern because of the time between classes. We're spread out so much, you know, maybe additional time between, give them more time to limit. It's really.
It's a tricky thing. And the more you read it, it's hard to wrap your mind. The elementaries are actually pretty easy.
One of the comments about the government buildings and the courthouses, you know that one person that says some of those things, I mean, but it did ring true that if we can limit the access, it's just logistically going to be really tough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Some key dates for you all, future events. It's a busy, busy time of year, as you all know, and you probably have these down. But the New Tech Senior Banquet is tomorrow at 5:30.
5:30 at South Belton Middle School.
At South Belton Middle School.
With dinner.
All right. Red and white game on Wednesday at 5 o'clock. Teacher of the Year Luncheon is this Thursday, 11:45, at Harris Community Center. Proud to be in American Day Friday at Miller Heights at 8:15 in the morning. The Athletics Wall of Honor Ceremony on Saturday at 10:00 at the high school, right? Okay, Belton High School.
In the back, in the lobby there, by the gymnasium.
And then this coming Sunday already, Baccalaureate at 2:00. I think we got an invitation from, I think it was Andy Davis, maybe?
Yes, Pastor Davis.
And then next week, graduation already, on Thursday, two of them. New Tech is at 2:00, Belton High School at 7:00 at the Expo Center.
It'll be fun, my, my problem.
And then SLI.
Interesting day.
For us to learn on Wednesday, June 13th, starting that evening. So make sure you have your plans in place for SLI. And I think that's all that I had. Oh, next regular meeting, June 18th. Was it? Connie, you have anything else that I might have missed? All right. Make sure I've got it all here. Okay. Board will now go into closed session to discuss personnel. And we will not be taking action when we get back into open session. So you all are welcome to leave or stick around. It is 7:45, and the board will reconvene in open session. There be no further business. We are adjourned.